It's an open topic opportunity for you to discuss whatever you would like to discuss. It is hoped that you will introduce yourself and give as much of a personal history as you desire, including your education, your experience, your involvement in the community, your familiarity with the office, your understanding of the office, and why you think you're the most qualified person for the job. And Ms. Boyer, you'll be up first and just right on down the line. Cell phones off, please.
Hi, I would like to start off first by thanking the chamber for hosting these forums, for Phil Gardner for moderating these forums we've had the last few weeks, and for AEP for sponsoring. My name is Adrienne Harris Boyer, and I am running for Commissioner of the Revenue. I was born in Henry County and raised by my grandparents, and I currently reside in the Figsboro area with my husband David and our two daughters Jolie and Autumn. My family and I attend Trinity Friends Church when my husband is an elder, and I serve on several boards. I'm a proud 1995 graduate of Magnavista High School, and after high school, I attended Patrick Henry Community College and graduated in 1998 with associate degrees in general studies, criminal justice, and real estate law. From there, I went straight to work for our local Commissioner of the Revenue's Office for Henry County, and I have been here ever since. In the 25 years, I'm almost 26, I have been employed in the office. I have worked with just about every facet with the office from bottom up. I started out in the real estate department where we handle mapping, real estate transactions, and land use for our farmers. After about 10 years in real estate, I transitioned to the front part of the office. I worked with personal property, tax relief for the elderly, and preparing state tax returns for county residents, where I'm only one of two people certified in the office to do state taxes, and the other one is our Commissioner Linda Law. I then became a Deputy Commissioner of Revenue and was appointed as the administrator of the entire business license, meals tax, and hotel occupancy taxation. I worked in the front office for about 15 years until the head of our real estate department retired, and I returned from where I started to take over that role. The only area of the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office that I haven't worked in is the assessors' office, and our department in real estate has to work very closely with the assessors' office, so I'm very familiar with what they do and how they do it. Outside of my full-time job in the Commissioner's Office, just want to let you know that I stay pretty busy. I've had several part-time jobs, and I currently work in the local ice cream shop scooping ice cream. I've been on PTO boards, worked with the Bassett High School after prom for several years, am in my second year as Treasurer of BHS Athletic Boosters, and the list just goes on and on. I'm not afraid to work. I never have been. I was always taught to have a strong work ethic by my grandparents. I'm not afraid to say no, and that's the combination that keeps me and my family hopping. I love helping people, and I always have. I feel like that's my best attribute is customer service. I'm proud to be a resident of Henry County, and I want to be active and involved whenever I can. During this campaign, people have asked me about my platform, and there's been a lot of talk about change. Change is very necessary sometimes, and there are several avenues where I think we can make improvements within our office. That is where my experience working in the office helps. I have the knowledge and understanding of our day-to-day activities and operations that will better inform me as to how to make the most meaningful changes within the office. For instance, I've been in talks with several business owners, and they've mentioned they would like to see some changes in the way they file their paperwork for their business. They want more online options for licensing meals tax and occupancy tax, and that is something that I have been looking into for quite a while. Also, another thing I'm interested in doing is having all the employees, as well as myself, to be certified. Certification of our employees has fallen by the wayside due to budget cuts and, as Scott said, elimination of travel expenses and other things. I want to work with the board and our county administrator to find ways to bring this back. I've already started transitioning the mapping to digital with the help of our engineering and mapping department. For years, we've maintained both a paper version and a digital version of the county's tax maps, which is a lot of wasted labor. Through all of this, though, there's one thing I don't ever want to see changed, and that is our level of customer service. In the time I've been employed with the Commissioner's Office, I've learned a lot about this job, and I'm very outgoing. I like working with people, and in the past 25 years, I've learned a lot about our customers. There's no other candidate with my experience, knowledge, and dedication, and that's why I'm asking you to trust me with your vote in November. I also want to ask everyone in here for their prayers for each and every candidate running for election in every category. This is not for the faint of heart. You lose a lot of time with your family. And lastly, I want to thank the chamber for having us here tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak, and I would just like to again ask you for your consideration in November.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison, you're up, sir.
I want to first thank also those involved with putting this together. We appreciate you, and thank all of the citizens or residents who showed up tonight. I call you the responsible voters because you thought enough of this election to come out and hear what these candidates have to say. My name is Dallas Harrison. I am a lifelong resident of Henry County. I've been married to Larissa Harrison for 19 years. I have two sons, Reagan and Cameron. I graduated from Laurel Park High School in 1997. I went on to college at Guilford College located in Greensboro, graduating in 2001 with a BS in Business Management. I'm a Virginia licensed certified residential real estate appraiser. So since birth, I've been a member at Greater New Bethel Apostolic Church, where I currently serve as a secretary and as a trustee. So I want to get through that portion pretty quickly because I want to really get to why I think that I'm the right candidate for the job. I think that I'm the right candidate for the job because I have a plan to address the problems that I'm aware of, at least, within that's plaguing the office. Some problems you don't know until you get there and you get a hold of the books and so forth. So those that I'm aware of, I have a plan to address them. From day one, my platform has been for accountability within this office, and that's accountability. We can't continue to have overdue processes, unfilled processes, and think that we're going to be successful in the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. So my platform is to bring responsible revenue processing to the Commissioner of Revenue. And, you know, I believe that my experience and a plan for a fresh approach, I can make an immediate impact in that office. How? I believe that a heavy emphasis on continuing education and training will be the catalyst for the change in that office. There is huge gains that can be realized for this office in terms of efficiency. I know we've been talking about digital technology and all that, but we need a well-trained staff. And when I looked at the budget for the Commissioner of Revenue, I was surprised to see there wasn't a line item for continuing education or training. Now, it may be buried somewhere in another line item, I don't know, but just looking at the budget, there is no training. And when I, as I stated before, well, actually, I didn't state that, I'm sorry, I've worked for 21 years in the City of Martinsville Real Estate Assessment Office, which is in the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. So my entire career has been in service to this community in the City of Martinsville, which is, you know, part of this community, Martinsville, Henry County. But back to what I was saying about training, when I have noticed in my years of service, when I go out in training, many times, Henry County is not represented in that training in continuing education. They may be doing some other form of it, but to my knowledge, I don't think they are. So my emphasis will be on continuing education, training, and in that training, I plan on cross-training at least 30 to 40%. And that way, as Scott stated before, it'd be great to have other people, you know, more people in the office. That would be great, but sometimes, you know, especially with the effects of COVID, you don't have that option. So what cross-training does is give you the ability to carry the load. When someone else is trained, you can have that person to jump in and share the load. But, you know, if you, I think that sometimes you have unhealthy work environments when you don't have a properly trained. So one other thing before, I got 30 seconds, so not now, but duplication of services. We don't want to duplicate services. That's a misuse of manpower. So I'm through on time, but hopefully, at the end of this, I can talk about a few more of these issues. I want to get to that pretty quick, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Harrison.
I'm adjusting the camera because I'm so short, probably. All right, first, I want to thank the chamber, AP, Phil Gardner, everybody for throwing this event, and everybody for coming out tonight. So I'm Tiffany Renee Harrison, and I'm running for Henry County Commissioner of Revenue. I am a lifelong Henry County resident. I help raise money for the Martinsville Henry County Leaders of Tomorrow, our lot youth baseball softball teams. We've been doing this for probably over a decade now, I believe, for our youth in the community. I also work with the youth in basketball. I've coached Poxham Rec at the middle school level as well. My family volunteers at various community events. We serve meals, help our local churches. So I received my Associate's Degree in Information Technology from Patrick and Henry. I received my Bachelor's Degree in Application and Database Development in Liberty University. I just got my Master's of Education at Regent University just last year. I believe in integrity, a superior work ethic, and leading by example. In my previous job, I introduced software, led major projects, counted enclosed cashier registers, handled lump sums of cash, and I also run a small business and a rental property where I do all of the accounting. I continue to work in public service because of my current position serving the entire Henry County. So I am a systems analyst for the Henry County PSA. I run our financial system. Some of you might have heard it earlier, it's called MUNIS. It also generates all of our tax bills, which is what we do in the Commissioner's Office. I am the only person in the county who runs this program. I'm the only candidate who knows the resources that this program allows us to have, as well as the resources in the IT department that will allow us to implement and streamline a lot of services that will be at no cost to taxpayers. Scott Grandstaff, as you met him earlier, he has been our Treasurer for 23 years, and in that time, he has never once received real estate or personal property on time. So with my knowledge and my experience, this will be fixed. We will be able to streamline these processes with imports and different things that MUNIS has. So I decided to run for the Commissioner because my platform eliminates the burden of excessive work hours. It will promote a stress-free work environment, more customer service options, and allow for growth and development that will be effective for the Revenue Office, which in turn will serve the community at the highest level in customer service. Some of the duties of the Commissioners to create the tax bills and enforce the Department of Taxation and the Board of Supervisors guidelines. It is an elected position, so at 100% it works for the citizens of Henry County. I have identified the key issues in the Revenue Office with personal property and real estate. I found those solutions that will help speed up day-to-day processing and make things more accessible to citizens. I want to implement import features in MUNIS. It will bring faster process and allow the office to deliver things on time. I plan to improve the communications between the county offices and also improve our online systems. We have forms and stuff online now that people can submit, and I want to utilize that to do the same thing for businesses and other residents to submit forms to our office. We also will be doing upgrades soon, which we will be able to, citizens will be able to create some accounts. You can have your personal account, and it will be easy for you to file these taxes and things with us every single year. I am the only candidate who has been a part of the setup and the processing of the personal property, the real estate, the assessments, business licenses. Some of my written instructions that I created just last year are still being used today. I am the only candidate who has helped our current Commissioner with Commissioner of Revenue specific duties that only happen once a year. One of the things that I want to implement in personal property, it can only be done when you cut the year over. That happens the first of January, when the new Commissioner takes office. If you don't set it up at that time, you have to wait the entire year before you can do it again. So I am the only person who is qualified and will have to assist the next up Commissioner. My platform was well-received by various members of our community leaders and the members of the current staff and recently retired staff in the Commissioner of the Revenue Office. Our community will have, will not have to, I'm sorry, our community will not have effective change without your vote. Elect the best candidate who identifies the correct issues and has the experience and support to implement solutions to better serve the residents. Vote for the only candidate who is fully prepared to serve on January 1st. Vote for Tiffany Renee Harrison. I am the first candidate on the Commissioner of Revenue ballot, and I humbly ask for your support on November 7th. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Appalachian Power for sponsoring, Martinsville Henry County, Chamber of Commerce for putting this together, Phil Gardner acting as moderator, and Patrick Henry Community College for the event space. My name is Blake Minter. I am one of the Henry County Assessors and the Commissioner of the Revenue Office. It's great to see people come out and care about who the candidates that are here running for the Commissioner of Revenue. I have been a Henry County resident my entire life. My parents have, from the very beginning of my life, installed the values and meaning of hard work and helping out the community. From when I was just a kid walking with my dad, collecting money for bikes for tikes, till here recently, helping with the Mount Olivet Ruins Club, of which I am a member, community work has been the forefront of my life. My education includes graduating from Magnavista High School and attending Patrick and Henry County, excuse me, Patrick and Henry Community College, where I received an associate in business administration. I've worked in industrial jobs in the county such as Eastman, where I received certification from the college here in advanced filmmaking. Before I worked as an assessor for the county, I worked at Star Springs as a quality coordinator, where I helped the company achieve the difficult task of being IATF 16949 certified. This is the highest quality certification you can achieve for being a manufacturer of automotive parts for a company. This ensures companies, such as Volvo Trucking, that the company is up to the quality standards they desire. While there, I also received my certificate in Quality Management Systems Lead Auditor Core Tools, Advanced Product Quality Planning, and Product Part Approval Process. All of this I achieved within six months of being on the job. After Star Springs, I started my work at the Commissioner of Revenue Office, of which I've been there now for over three and a half years. From the very start, I have looked at new and innovative ways to both improve my workflow as well as the office. I have developed and implemented new technologies in the office in various capacities. These include getting GoPro camera devices to mount on the county vehicles, where we are able to quickly and accurately assess properties in the county, as well as update our property card with a current photo of that parcel. I have also gotten this new handheld computer tablets, where we're able to pull up the property cards remotely in the field when we are picking up new construction permits, demos, or any other various activities we are currently there at that parcel. We can take new pictures, write new information on the property card, so that we have fairly and accurately assessed people's property. I have also gotten the office new measuring equipment, including remote laser devices that allow to measure from a distance. So if you've got a new addition in the back of your house, that's got a dog fence around it, your German Shepherd Rex can rest easy in his doghouse, and we can get everything we need without having to disturb you or anybody from the community. All of this technology and improvements that I have implemented, I have prototyped and developed within three months into my job using my own money. This is just a small sample of what I've done while working for the Henry County and the level of commitment I've done for the Real Estate Assessment Office. I plan on doing the same level of hard work if elected as Commissioner of the Revenue to ensure Henry County residents and businesses are fairly, accurately, effectively assessed at all levels of property. Thank you.
Melissa Zaire?
Good evening, everyone. As he said, I am Melissa Zaire. I am probably the one person here that most of you have not seen or spoken to. I am just going to give you a little background of who I am and who I am not. I am not a politician. I do not do public speaking. This terrifies me. But I am a constituent of Henry County, and I have come to you in saying that what I have seen as a constituent, just looking at the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, needs to change. Now, my background, I was born and raised here. I grew up in the backwoods of this county. I went to Bassett High School, graduated valedictorian in 1993, went away to college, Mary Baldwin College, full scholarship, came back, and went to Patrick and Henry Community College. And then I fell into finance. I was supposed to be a biology major, by the way, and I fell into finance, as I say, because it was the easy thing for me. It was the thing that I was good at. And so I spent 15 years working as a finance director for two divisions, commercial and retail, here in Martinsville and in Richmond, Virginia. Now, both of those, of course, ended up being sold, and I went through the process of being laid off by a company. Now, most of the people out there that are probably watching have went through some kind of downturn in this county. You've been laid off, you've had to do unemployment. I've been there. I've done it. Okay? So I am like most of you out there. I am not the standard kind of come up here and make you promises of what I can and can't do, but I will tell you what I see that needs to be improved. Now, every single one of the people that I'm running against are perfectly capable and probably better equipped to handle a job like this, and the fact that they have experience. All four of them have experience in our administration office in some way, shape, or form. I am your odd man out. But I have seen, as a person that runs a business, I've had a photography business and filed for a business license. When I went to file for my business license, I was told I needed a P and L. My P and L was a piece of paper that no one audited. It was something that I gave to them, and of course, it was honest, and I do have integrity in my business, but no one followed up with me. So I paid that for two years until my photography business went under. When I was actually the regional manager for that finance location, we were three years behind on our business licenses when I took that job. We were three years behind on personal property taxes. No one contacted us. I contacted their office in 1999 and had them file for us. I sent them the paperwork. Now, I know that that was 25 years ago, but I can tell you right now, that's not changed. Most everything that we have is self-reported. It is an honest, I guess, you could say an honor system that we have for most of our taxes. That's not good. We have a $600,000 budget for our Commissioner of Revenue's Office. With that budget, we have four deputy commissioners, we have the Commissioner of Revenue, we have a chief deputy commissioner, who is in charge of the others, and we have tax clerks, we have data entry, and we have assessors that follow into the assessors' office. But we have no auditors, and that is something that we need to see about. Validity of our data is an issue in this office, and as a constituent, I have put myself forward for this office and put myself in this very uncomfortable position to speak on these issues because it's not necessarily a bad office. It's not your employees that are doing a bad job. It is the processes. So I thank you for your time, and hopefully, we'll get to talk a little more about what we can do, and I again look forward to speaking to most of you about these issues going forward with the election. Thank you.
I'm Attorney General Jason Yares. My job as Attorney General is to be the people's protector and partnering with law enforcement. I could think of no greater partner right now that we have than Sheriff Wayne Davis. He's over 23 years of experience in law enforcement, everything from being a patrolman, the SWAT team, the homicide investigator. He'd be a fantastic sheriff. I ask you to go vote in November. I'm proud to support him. The world is run by those that show up. Show up for Sheriff Davis on Election Day.
This ad is paid for and authorized by D. Wayne Davis Jr. for Sheriff.
A broken or cracked windshield can ruin a day. At Daniel's Auto Glass, it's our goal to make that unfortunate scenario as painless as possible. We have been servicing Franklin County and the surrounding areas since 1995. Our customers are our neighbors, and we want you to know that you have the choice who repairs or replaces your windshield. And if you can't come out to us, we can come out to you. We also offer window tinning, and we are fully equipped and certified to reset all camera systems in any windshield, both in shop and with our mobile unit.
Sarver Cleaning Services is locally owned and operated since 1997, providing leading commercial and residential cleaning solutions in Virginia and North Carolina. Let us handle all your cleaning needs. 24-hour service, seven days a week. Give them a call at (276) 647-7667, or info@sarvercleaningservices.com.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County, and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or will run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, 888-257-8866.
Richard Sarver Realtor 2023, Reader's Choice Award winner for Best Realtor. For all your listings and selling needs, give him a call at (276) 732-3187.
Thank you all. The next, we're moving along very well, so I want to increase the time on the next one to four and a half minutes. You don't have to take it. It's just a little increase in the time, and it's more the topic that we're concerned about than the exact question. Probably nothing gets the blood pressure of a citizen up faster than when he gets his new assessment. It's always a matter of high excitement. So the invitation on question number two is, what is your understanding on how real estate is assessed? What is the touchstone of the assessment? Is it supposed to be fair market value? Is it fair market value as compared to surrounding properties? Is it fair market value compared on comparable sales? And what should it be? So I'd like So I'd like you to address your feeling about the assessments, the assessment process, demonstrate your understanding on what the basis of the assessment is supposed to be, and to the extent you have any discretion, what the basis should be. And if you want to talk about who gets to pick the assessors and how you pick the assessors, that's okay too. And that's why we increased it to four and a half minutes. And let's just go down the line again.
So I do not work in the real estate assess assessing office, but my feelings aside, no matter where I work within the office, according to the State Code of Virginia, real estate must be assessed at 100% of fair market value. Currently, our assessors, which Blake is one of those, we have three. Our assessors assess using real estate, using a mixture of both comparable sales and similarly situated properties. During the assessments, which take about two years to complete, they look at sales for the preceding two years along with current market conditions. At the end of that two years and they make their session decision, they assessment decision, they can also actually go back and kind of amend that, maybe not amend it, but change that. If current market conditions have changed a little bit, they can tweak that assessment before it's released. We have approximately a little over 40,000 parcels of land and around 20,000 homes. Our assessors also assess industries, retail, apartments, and mobile home parks. Using the mixture of both comp sales and fair market value, I think is the most fair and equitable equitable way of taxing property to the benefit of the county taxpayers, businesses, and the county itself.
Thank you.
I feel you're right in that the assessors often time get a bad rap because when you get your assessment, the first thing you you think of is that it's a it's a money grab. They want more taxes, but that's not true. The purpose of a reassessment is to equally distribute the burden of taxes evenly within the locality. So the the first and foremost concern is uniformity. We want to make sure that the assessment is done equitably. We want to treat everybody fairly. Secondly, we want to assess by, actually by law, Virginia Code 58.1-3201 states that the Commissioner Revenue are required to assess property at 100% of its fair market value. Scott stated earlier that the the market is going haywire. Anybody that's involved with real estate now knows that the property values are through the roof. A lot of people in in the county don't realize that. Just to paint a little picture for you, the city of Martinsville, our, we reassess every two years. The county reassesses every four years. So they hadn't, the next reassessment, you're going to see some increases, well, you should see at least. But the city of Martinsville, when we're speaking in terms of residential real estate, not commercial, but on average, it was a 30% increase. That now that's on average, so that means there's a considerable amount above 30% that received above 30% increase. Now, that the out of, and with that 30% increase, I talked to probably maybe 250 people or so that were not pleased with their assessment and the my assistant talked to about 170. But all of all of those meetings and talking, we had a few that went to the Board of Equalization to appeal, but none were changed. Why weren't they changed? It's because of the sales. Sales, comparable sales or arms length sales is the foundation for a good assessment. So those are are hard, concrete facts that's happening in the market, and we use those to defend assessments. So I guess in short, the assessors do not create the value of property. It's people buying and selling in the market that creates what values are doing and what the fair market value of properties are. So my short answer is yes, both uniformity and 100% of market value should be considered. But we all, first and foremost, it should be equitability. You know, we want to be equitable to everyone that we're assessing. Thank you.
All right. Apparently, I think we are going to give you codes a lot tonight because here comes here comes another one. So the Code of Virginia, it requires the real estate assessment to represent fair market value. For most residential properties, it's the value that's best determined from comparable sales data by analysts and recently sold properties. A lot of other factors must be taken into consideration, you know, contract sales, other listings, all of that affects the fair market value. The Code of Virginia mandates localities with a population of more than 50,000 conduct a general assessment every four years to determine the property, determine the fair market value. Henry County is over 51,000. In some cases, there might not be enough comparable sales to accurately estimate the value of a property using the comparable sales approach. And the fair market, you know, is defined by the price which a property will bring, what it is offered for sale by one who desires but not obligated to sell and brought by one who is under no necessity to have it. I've had several conversations with residents who wants to buy properties that fall within the four-year period and then they don't want to wait till the reassessment to to sell. You know, some properties, we have like a baseline where they all is like a minimum of like $5,000 and some properties aren't worth that. So, you know, that leaves the burden of the citizens having to pay taxes on properties that they they don't want. Obviously, the properties, you know, we should do something to get them to be able to assess when they sell. And thank you.
Thank you.
I think everybody said it, but I'll say it again. As a real estate assessor, we have to ensure all property in the county is assessed at 100% fair market value. This is stated by the Virginia Code, of which we must adhere to all aspects of. We also adhere to the guidelines of IAAO, which stands for the International Association of Assessing Officers, and the AAO, which is instead of international, it just means Virginia. In Henry County and counties in general, Virginia, we do a general reassessment every four years. In cities such as Martinsville, this is every two years. This puts extra pressures on, extra pressure on us to make sure that we get the assessment correctly as four years is quite a long time. Our last one went into effect in 2021, and our next one, which we are currently working on, will go into effect in 2025. And I'm sure everyone is here is aware and have felt the changes in the housing market and inflation in general. That's the all more reason to improve the real estate office and getting deed transfer in a timely manner as well as having accurate sales information so that we conduct the reassessment correctly. The reassessment office currently only has one employee. At one time, they had three employees. The same amount of transfers that happened 20 years ago happened today. Having enough personnel to work back there will help expedite the process of making sure that everyone gets their deed information done correctly, the transfers of properties information, that way the treasurer's office can get what they need in a timely manner so that everybody can get their bills on time and correct. One of the programs that's been mentioned is municipal. We also have another program called Vision. Vision is our real estate assessment program. It is utilized to evaluate properties in the county. Real estate taxes generate the most amount of money in the county, so the Vision program is very much helpful in doing that. When I first came to the county, we were utilizing little aspects of the Vision program, and now we're utilizing it almost to its fullest potential. There's always room for improvement, but it allows us now to more accurately assess properties and like the question stated, have comparable sales of local properties to show how much something they should be valued at based on the sales in the area. And there's there's talk about, you know, if there isn't a sale of property, how you value it. And there's different ways as well. The sales is, of course, if something's sale, that usually is indication of how much that property has worked. But there's three approaches to value when a property. Sales approach, which has been discussed from both candidates here and myself. Income approach, which is value of a property based on the income that it generates. This includes properties such as apartments or like shopping centers. And then the last one would be a cost approach, which is basically valuing the cost to construct a new building minus any kind of depreciation that is involved, such as a new industrial plant. You must value accordingly based on the situation, and it varies depending, so you must be able to decide which one is the best factor. This was stated in all the real estate appraisal classes I've taken to further my education and knowledge. And talk about industrial plants, one of the largest projects I had was at the beginning of this year, was valuing the Crown and Court Can Building at Commonwealth Cross and at the state line. This was months worth of research, project verifying in other localities across the United States that have similar plants like this one to ensure that the valuation I would put on this new building would be correct. Like all new projects, there are tax benefits that they will receive, but once they've run their course, this is just one project, I've estimated will bring in about a quarter million dollars into the county just from real estate taxes alone. This level of assessment, I apply to all properties I have value in the county, homes, businesses, industries, and vacant land. This this allows us to make sure that we're not just assessing people's homes, we're assessing all properties so that the tax burden does not shift onto the people's properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to repeat tax code to you guys because I did my researching, read up on that too. And of course, everyone in the office there would have a tax code book that they could look these up. Where fair market value is, what the Constitution of Virginia states, okay? And of course, we've got two assessors that have explained extensively how that that you could potentially do this, and they go to school to learn this. We also have programs and different ways that they do this. So I think that asking any of us of a feeling, how we would feel on something that the Virginia State Code asks us to take care of is kind of a an off question to ask, especially for a constitutional officer who has to amend by our tax code. So fair market value, depending on how you see the houses around you, how they sell, is how Henry County has been doing it in the past. Now, can that be amended? Potentially. Something no one has brought up yet is that, yes, we do assess every four years. It is stated in the code that we have to assess every four years. However, in populations like Henry County, where you're between 30,000 and 50,000 people, you can actually go to your board, the constitutional officer, Commissioner Revenue, can go to the Board of Supervisors, governing board, and ask to assess either more often or longer, depending on the situation. We, right now, the code states that they can ask for one year, two year, three year, or four year assessments. Now, can that be amended further, potentially? Now, that runs into the question of, does someone get a fair assessment if we get it more often? Potentially. If you're running into a market like what we're doing now where things are going crazy and we're having an assessment every year, potentially, no, that's not going to help anybody because we don't want to take away money from our public who are struggling to meet these tax payments, and that's what we're happening right now. If we're assessing on four years, obviously, constituents know what their tax bill is going to be for the next four years, which is lovely, they can budget for it, but we need to get that information to them, that they understand it's only being assessed every four years. Now, my question is, is that if we're assessing 20,000 parcels of residential and 40,000, I think we were saying, of land, once every four years, how valid and how concise is that data? If you do your research and you start looking at the actual GIS map, you'll find that some of that's not being assessed properly. It's also not being moved properly from owner to owner, which means potentially someone is getting billed for something that they do not own anymore. I sold a house. It took 18 months for the GIS record to be updated. So again, as a constituent, I am showing you other problems that we are having. I want you to understand though, as Commissioner Revenue, there are standards that we have to abide by. The Virginia Code, tax code is one of them, and there are ways to amend it, there are ways to go around it. We need to make it more, I guess, available to public information that people like people over 65, people with full disabilities, veterans that have, you know, 100% disability, veterans that been killed in the line of service and their surviving spouses have homes here, they can file for, I guess, a deferment or whatever, I don't know, but they can actually file for a situation where they can relieve that tax bill for a specific, specific amount of time. I know that it has to be updated every year, but that needs to be something that as a public, the Commissioner Revenue should be making that apparent to these people that are out there that could potentially be saving money. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm Sheriff Wayne Davis. My family and I have lived our entire lives right here in Henry County, and we spend our free time enjoying many activities in God's great outdoors. I'm a believer in hometown values, God, family, and country. For the last 23 years, I have worked at the Henry County Sheriff's Office and faithfully served the citizens of Henry County. As your sheriff, I vow to continue working hard every day to remove drug dealers and criminals from your streets to ensure this community is safe for you and your family. I will always be engaged with our local residents to understand your concerns and needs, and by working with members of this community, we will continue to keep Henry County a great place to live, work, and raise our families. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th. I'm Sheriff Wayne Davis, and this ad was paid for and authorized by D. Wayne Davis Jr. for Sheriff.
A broken or cracked windshield can ruin a day. At Daniel's Auto Glass, it's our goal to make that unfortunate scenario as painless as possible. We have been servicing Franklin County and the surrounding areas since 1995. Our customers are our neighbors and we want you to know that you have the choice who repairs or replaces your windshield. And if you can't come out to us, we can come out to you. We also offer window tending and we are fully equipped and certified to reset all camera systems in any windshield, both in shop and with our mobile unit.
Sarver Cleaning Services is locally owned and operated since 1997, providing leading commercial and residential cleaning solutions in Virginia and North Carolina. Let us handle all your cleaning needs. 24-hour service, seven days a week. Give them a call at 276-647-7667 or info@sarvercleaningservices.com.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County, and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, 888-257-8866.
Richard Sarver Realtor 2023, Reader's Choice Award winner for Best Realtor. For all your listings and selling needs, give him a call at (276) 732-3187.
We'll mix up the order a little bit. Let's have our folks in the middle of the table go first. Let me give you the question though. With respect to the machine and tool tax, these are entirely self-reporting. How can you be sure that everybody who should be reporting machine and tools are in fact reporting them? And how do you check the values? Is it entirely on our system? And do you do anything to double check? And any comments you have about what is a machine and tool? For example, does McDonald's have to pay for its equipment? Does Lowe's or, you know, a place like Home Depot, do they have to pay equipment? Does an auto body shop have to pay for the equipment, tax on the equipment it has? Does a law office in the county have to pay on its typewriters, copy machines? And everybody knows you can trust a lawyer, but how do you know? How do you know it's being reported? So why don't we have Tiffany address that first, and then Dallas, and then Melissa, and then Blake, and then Adrian, if I can remember the order?
I want to ask somebody a question before the night's over about that doghouse they're going to assess.
To ensure that everybody who should be reporting on the machinery and tools are in fact reporting, reporting them, I like to do routine checks, random checks, just periodically. You know, it's difficult, you know, we've been short three people, you know, it's just difficult to sit and look at every single thing. So a part of this has to be on the system, but you know, if we can, you know, do some auditing, do some things like that, hopefully it'll help continue to keep people honest. I don't think we have too, too much of a problem of it not being the case. So, so any reports of any inaccurate reporting, that will be thoroughly investigated within the full power of the Commissioner. The Virginia Code, it states that the Commissioner can review returns of a taxpayer from the Department of Taxation. If there were allegations about a taxpayer, I would enforce the Virginia Code 58.1-3110, Section A. Basically, you would summon the reporter into the office and put them under oath and have them provide evidence that they have of someone inaccurately reporting information. And if proof is obtained, then you would go to the next step, which is Section B of that same code, B and C, that would allow the accused person to bring in documentation to show, you know, to defend those allegations. And then if anything comes of that, then the penalties that is assessed in the next code of 58-1-3111 will be enforced, just basically by the guidelines of the code. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so all businesses are subject to business tangible personal property tax. And under provision of law, they are required to file an itemized listing of all the equipment utilized in the course of business. So properties such as furniture, fixtures, computer equipment, machinery and tools, and heavy equipment that was located in the county, in Henry County as of January 1 of that tax year. So this listing must be attached to the business personal property return. So the Commissioner Revenue has that return. But failure to file that return will result, result in a required assessment based on what the Commissioner does have. So a lot of times, if, I guess, if they, you know, you always want to submit your data because you don't want to leave it up to someone that doesn't know what you have in your business to say that you have 10 computers and you only have two. So, and that's what, that's what will happen if you don't, I guess, submit that, that information. So the, as stated, the Commissioner has access to returns and business information. And one thing that I guess needs to be mentioned also is that the, the information that the Commissioner has, they're bound by law to hold all information in confidentiality. So if, for some reason, they have, you know, a belief that a business is not correctly submitting the items that they have, it's the responsibility of the Commissioner to diligently go and, and discover. That's part of what the Commissioner does in process is discovery. We have a little pamphlet there in, in our office. It's a little guy, he's got a hat on, he's got a big, he's a little guy in a big old magnifying glass, and he's got it over top of a house. So that's part of what the Commissioner does is discovery and audit. So all I can say is, for me, I would, when I get into office, as I've stated before, I will be responsible for revenue processing and accountable for those things.
To answer your question, I have seen a doghouse with a carport in it before. So it's definitely not out of the question. When I was at Star Springs, I had to audit not just our systems and material, but our suppliers as well. This included going out to the industrial plant and verifying that everything that was being done correctly and in place. Sometimes that would include traveling across the United States, but this was necessary to ensure that everything was as it should be. My past experience would help ensure that the machinery and tool list would be correct. There's not been a physical audit formed at any of the places reporting machinery tool lists in probably a couple of decades. A thorough audit examination is warranted and, in my opinion, is overdue. Some of it's going to be even done in the office by using common sense and a little research. For example, if the industry routinely receives material that comes in batches weighing 5,000 pounds each, and they have in their list a forklift that can only do 2,500, then there's two things probably going on. One, there's a more powerful and expensive forklift that can lift up that 5,000 pounds, or two, ocean needs to be called because one forklift is definitely doing overtime. Like my job in the real estate assessor's office, the Commissioner Revenue, and like my job at Star Springs, you must double check your work. Everything must be accounted for. That means sometimes going out to the properties, wherever they may be, you know, kind of an industrial setting or a mechanic shop, and respecting the businesses, but making sure that everything that they have is listed correctly on the forms that they submit to the Commissioner Revenue office. I'm used to doing that with my old job, I'm used to doing my current job, and the support from the community voters, I would like to do that as Commissioner Revenue as well. Thank you.
I know you're enjoying watching me get up and come up here and start citing things that you didn't know, but they are correct in the fact that, you know, it is kind of an honor system on these two. Depreciation schedules should be accounted for through the businesses. But right now, it is an honor system for the business to report it to the Commissioner Revenue. You have to have someone in that business who understands and knows that is part of their requirement as a business in Henry County. There are a ton of them out there that do not understand that requirement, and I don't know if that's an education issue, an information issue of where we're not getting out there. But with this type of scenario that we're, you keep, everyone keeps playing it back to, the Commissioner Revenue is supposed to be doing auditing, assessing, we're supposed to do everything once you're in the office. One person cannot do everything in that office. We cannot run an office by ourselves. You have to have a staff that you trust and train to do these operations appropriately. Okay? And that's why I think we need auditors. And we don't need auditors necessarily in the Treasurer's Office, which is where everybody wants to put them because that's where the money goes. It needs to be where the money starts, in my belief, because we're the ones that assess the tax levy, regardless of what it is. Okay? Mills tax, machinery, tools tax, we're where it starts. We're the first line of defense. We're the first line of business in Henry County. And Henry County is a business before all else. So your money works for you through that business. If the Commissioner Revenue's office is not working properly through training, you know, cross-training between employees, understanding what jobs are, if you have someone out sick for three months, like they said, someone else should be there, they should understand that job. And we have that big problem right now in the Commissioner Revenue's office. Okay? I know that this year, they have definitely taken a step. We have, I have seen it, I've watched it go into play with some of these things, and I want to commend the people here that have helped on that because I've watched the assessor's office change. I have watched the Commissioner Revenue's office change, and they're cross-training their people more this year. That is a valuable asset to any office that we, that you run, period. If you are an administrator, a constitutional officer, however you want to put it, an office manager, you are only as strong as the staff that supports you. Okay? It's never one person that gets things done. It's not that one person that can do everything. Your people, if you trust them, will support you, and that is part of it, is making sure that you have a strong selection of people to back you up. You also need the programming system, and that's where Tiffany comes in talking about Munis. Munis bothers me because she is the one person that is running it currently. They don't have a budget. That program, that accounting program can do unimaginable things. It is a financial program that should have dashboards for all of our constituents to look up their real estate property taxes, on what real estate, on their cars. What car did I own in 2009? If we have 20 years of data in our databases that someone can get to and look at out there from a computer, that helps us as a Commissioner Revenue's office do our job better, and that passes down the line to people like the Treasurer's Office, making sure that the money comes in correctly. Okay? So hopefully that helps. Again, I don't know if I answered the question, but I've always tried to help pinpoint things that we need help on. Okay?
Thank you.
So right now, yes, reporting of machinery and tools is a self-reporting taxation, and it's primarily on the honor system. But we have a lot of checks and balances. Currently, we check for any discrepancies year to year. We compare the current year to the previous year. If we do not receive a filing, we call the business or their bookkeeper and make sure we get it as soon as possible, preferably within the week. We also have vehicles that drop into our system from the DMV. If there are vehicles listed that drop in from the DMV, but we have no equipment listed for that business, we immediately reach out to them as soon as we notice the discrepancy. We also stay in touch with the EDC, which is our Economic Development Office, the Board of Supervisors, and Dale, our county administrator, who lets us know about any new businesses that they may have come in contact with. We also review local media outlets that make any news programs or anything that may state about a new business or something that we may have missed. If we do miss any new business, state code tells us that we have the ability to go back in tax the current year plus three years back. And I would like to, if possible, of course, you don't know what you can do till you get in there and you see the budget and what, you know, people are talking about wanting to add positions. You never know what you can do because the county constantly goes back and cuts, the same as the city. You may say you want to hire something, somebody, and Scott knows that too, they come back and they cut, and then they cut again until they get a balanced budget. But I would like to, if possible, add a new position to our staff to act as an auditor to go out and inspect each business's books, to ensure the information they report is accurate. The potential increase in revenue from that position would more than justify the position without any extra burden on the county's taxpayers. And this would also help equalize the burden between the county, residents, and our businesses alike. And for bonus information, according to this year's budget figures just put out about a month and a half ago, the greatest source of revenue for the county is from state, followed by local taxes, from real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools, which all of this is generated from our office. Thank you.
I'm Attorney General Jason Yares. My job as Attorney General is to be the people's protector and partnering with law enforcement. I could think of no greater partner right now that we have, the Sheriff Wayne Davis. He's over 23 years of experience in law enforcement, everything from being a patrolman, the SWAT team, the homicide investigator. He'd be a fantastic sheriff. I ask you to go vote November. I'm proud to support him. The world is run by those that show up. Show up for Sheriff Davis on Election Day.
This ad is paid for and authorized by D. Wayne Davis, Jr. for Sheriff.
A broken or cracked windshield can ruin a day. At Daniel's Auto Glass, it's our goal to make that unfortunate scenario as painless as possible. We have been servicing Franklin County and the surrounding areas since 1995. Our customers are our neighbors, and we want you to know that you have the choice who repairs or replaces your windshield. And if you can't come out to us, we can come out to you. We also offer window tending, and we are fully equipped and certified to reset all camera systems in any windshield, both in shop and with our mobile unit.
Sarver Cleaning Services is locally owned and operated since 1997, providing leading commercial and residential cleaning solutions in Virginia and North Carolina. Let us handle all your cleaning needs. 24-hour service, seven days a week. Give them a call at (276) 647-7667 or info@sarvercleaningservices.com.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County, and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, 888-257-8866.
Richard Sarver Realtor 2023, Reader's Choice Award winner for Best Realtor. For all your listings and selling needs, give him a call at (276) 732-3187.
All right, the last question, and it's cut off at four minutes. You don't have to take that much time, but the last question has to do, and I keep hearing different things about campground, so maybe somebody that knows something about a campground can address it. What do you intend to do to ensure that meals, campground, and lodging taxes are fully, completely, and accurately assessed? And could you address how it is that you can renew your business license if any of these taxes are delinquent? And let's see, I don't think, Ms. Hare, you haven't been up first yet, have you?
Yeah.
You have? Oh, well, let's go from the middle out again. Mr. Harrison, why don't you address this one first? And then, Ms. Harrison? And then, Ms. Harrison? Ms. Hare? I hope so.
Okay, so again, this requires diligent searching, discovery, all means available to the office to collect or to process food and beverage and transient occupancy taxes, more commonly known as meals and room taxes. They are collected monthly by hotels, motels, room and houses, bed and breakfasts, and other, others who provide lodging for under 90 days. So, but as Theo has stated, and someone else said something about the camp, campgrounds, you have this popular thing of Airbnb's and campgrounds. So if we're not taxing those things, that should be a revenue stream that we, we, we tack or try to tap into because they are increasingly popular. A lot of people, if you look on Airbnb and look at the amount of Airbnb's in Monmouth is a lot. And so if they're providing the same services hotels is, is, I guess, fair that they pay the same tax, taxes according to what revenues they're bringing in. But again, this is filed monthly, and even if there's no sales that, that month, those who file will be taxed and billed based on estimates using average daily rates and et cetera. So you have, you know, like I said, popular things like Airbnb's that seem, seemingly get away if we're not taxing these outlets in the same manner that we're doing hotels and other things. So, and the one thing I think that hadn't been kind of said is that, you know, it's been recommended by the county administrator to increase the transient occupancy tax. So I believe that increase, recommended increase was like 4%, I want to say, but I'm not positive on that. But again, my emphasis will be, as stated before, on discovery. You got to be diligent and consistent, and that's the key to success, I think, is being consistent in discovery and accountability in revenue process.
Thank you.
All right, so we can use gross receipts, gross rental receipts, have citizens provide itemized listing of their addresses with the gross receipts for each address. We can utilize the tax returns, as I mentioned earlier, to verify that our records are accurate. And also another thing, too, I was told that, you know, what I sent out for this plan for people that we won't be getting any new positions and the budget will not increase. So I, I wanted to come up with the plan that would utilize what we have currently in the office between IT department, Munis, and, and, you know, just utilize resources we have. This is why the streamlining, you know, D transactions, for example, how we're always months behind in producing D transactions. There's imports with Vision, camera imports in Munis. We can, we're the only, only people in the entire state who process D transactions this way. And everybody else is no more than two weeks behind in their data entry, and we are always several months. So those imports, the time that our staff would gain back from having to consistently do everything by hand is very valuable. It's very important. I think it'll help our office. It definitely will help our citizens. And, and also I want to say that I will always continue to look for ways to tackle any issue that comes up. As a systems analyst, I'm supposed to predetermine issues, I'm supposed to find issues before they become a problem. And, and so I do that a lot of times in the morning before everybody comes in. I'm there an hour early, and I get a lot of things rolling before everybody comes in, 8:30. A lot of people have no idea of issues we've had. But I believe in community and training. I want to continue to build relationships that I've been getting to build through the Treasurer's Office with other localities for us to stay up to standard. I will, I will require all staff to continue to start training and go to these Munis events to learn different ways that we can be better, be quicker, be more efficient. And so, you know, thanks, thanks to everyone, once again, for having this event, having us out, letting us speak. And I humbly just please ask for your consideration on November 7th to vote for Tiffany Renee Harrison. Early voting starts next Friday. Thank you for your time.
This has been stated, there has been several campgrounds that have popped up around the county. One that's kind of been always around is near the Hydroelectric Dam, I believe it's Indian Park. The new one, Stanley Town, that was originally, I think, it was Lily Pad, now it's Smith River RV Park. There was a new RV park behind, near the Colville Shopping Center. There's been a new RV park being developed, I think, near Royal King. And then I think there's another RV park that's near Axton. So they're pretty much popping up everywhere in the county. People are coming here to tour, to see the area, and of course, Henry County is a beautiful area to see. A lot of mobile home parks are being reutilized as these RV parks because they use the same connection hookups. But as the previous question, the accountability auditing, that's been second nature to me. We've seen new restaurants, of course, the new campgrounds that's popped up in the area the last couple of years. And I'm a proud supporter of local business. I've ran my campaign supporting these local businesses because for me, if I'm going to be running for Commissioner of Revenue, which is responsible for assessing properties for tax purposes, then I need to support local businesses in this area. To make sure all these taxes are accurately assessed, this requires contacting and following up on the businesses to make sure that they report all of these items in a timely manner. And we should also have more forms or information available online so it's easier for them to access and turn that information in, especially if the businesses are out of, you know, the county and whatnot. And also give them the timelines and update them the timelines, like a friendly, say, email that kind of tells them, hey, the reporting period's coming up in about a month. We haven't seen kind of the information just yet, but that way they're not caught off guard. And the Vision program that I work with, that also in concert works with Munis, they can help with some of these aspects, and I've been trying to develop getting more of that utilized so it can help free up information for us. I do want to thank everyone for coming here and finding out what the candidates and what we're about and what the information is about. And I'll leave y'all with one this last little bit, and I didn't start to get gray hair until I started Campbell County. I will say that, which my dad has stated, he didn't get gray hair until I was born. And you look at photos and, yeah, that's about right. Before I was born, it was, you know, black hair. And then three months after I was born, it was, started to turn gray. But what I've come to realize is that, that gray hair is, it comes from worrying of making sure that everything is done correctly and everything is taken care of. And you're always worried about making sure that everything is always correct, and you're always worried, and you, and you love the community and everything. It does turn your hair gray from the stress. But if that means making sure that everyone in this county is fairly taxed, assessed, you know, correctly, accurately, accurately, then by all means, I'll wear a shade of gray my whole life if that's the case. Thank you all again for y'all's time.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. The only thing I was going to say was kind of a joke for Blake. Sorry, I beat you to it. Okay? Because stress didn't do this. This started when I was 23, and I can't do anything about it. But as I was saying, it is a stressful position, no matter who takes over, especially going in after someone who has been 20 years. I think she's been within 20 years in this position, and she's ran it her way. Okay? Not saying that she's done a bad job. Linda Love is a neighbor of mine. I will not say anything bad about her. I do think that the office needs to progress. But progression or change, for the lack of actually finding a reason for that change, is redundant. You, you will start to see redundancy. And Tiffany stated it the best, is that you need to, we need to use the resources that we have currently in the office. We have a $600,000 budget every year. And no, that's probably not going to do everything for everybody, and it's not going to cover everything that we want. But we do have the opportunity, as a Commissioner of Revenue, to go forth and work with a governing body to actually change things in the office where not one person is just running reports for all of the treasury items or all of the different things that need to be said for someone. This needs to be something that everyone in that office understands about Munis. They need to be trained on that program in a factual way that they can help anybody who comes into that office for anything. We shouldn't have deputy commissioners that are just business license, real estate, personal property, because right now, all that shows to us is that it's getting behind. Currently, this year, we are supposed to have had, I think it was the real estate report by September 1st. Was, is that correct? Am I correct in that thinking? Was supposed to release, okay. So I am correct in that thinking, September 1st, and we still have not received it, correct? Okay. This is the third year, third year that I know of that it's been behind. This is something that we need to take care of. And it's not just something that we can go, oh, okay, it's the Commissioner of Revenue who's the problem. Because you have four deputy commissioners below that that are over specific areas that need to cross-train and figure out how to get this stuff done in a timely manner. This makes for an efficient office. Okay? This makes for efficient billing. And I'm not one that I enjoy getting my bill on December 3rd, okay, for my personal property tax. My kid's Christmas is hitting that time. Nobody likes seeing that big bill. I've been enjoying getting it in February. That might be something that we can talk to the governing body about moving. But the reporting needs to be in line with Virginia State Code, and right now, we are not. And we need to do better for our constituents, period. Okay? Campgrounds, we have to, okay? We want to talk about business and meals tax and people self-reporting things. That's great. We can talk about that all night. But if we're not efficiently coming up with strategies to make it work for the people that are already in that office, we are not helping our constituents in this county. We are just fighting amongst ourselves. So please pay attention, do your research, look at your candidates. We're all good people. They're all great people, I'll just tell you. Okay? But do your research, and I hope to see everyone out there casting their vote for whoever they feel is the best candidate for this position and every position this year. We hope to see you in November, okay? Thank you.
To answer the fourth question, for the last 15 years, I have been the administrator of our business license, meals tax, and occupancy tax filings. I feel like we already do a great job within the office ensuring these taxes are accurately assessed. Businesses are required to send in their records for the previous month for all three of these taxes by the 20th of the following month. We review these for any discrepancies from month to month, and we ensure that new restaurants, convenience stores, hotels, et cetera, are properly registered and signed up to collect this tax. We have contacts for each and every business via phone and email, and we stay up to date each month. We do charge penalties for any late payments. As far as lodging tax is concerned, lodging tax is currently 2%. It's a fee that's on the agenda of the October Board of Supervisors meeting to be raised to 4%. This raise will help with the day-to-day running of the Smith River Sports Complex that has just been laid in Henry County's lap, and the recruiting of new hotels. Campgrounds aren't currently paying lodging tax, and we aren't, and we are currently working with the county administrator and the board to ensure that this starts. The campground sort of came out of the, kind of came out of nowhere, kind of all at one time. And I can tell you that where a lot of the problem lies in the campgrounds is if you are in a campground or a hotel for 30 or plus days, and you, you booked that site or that hotel room for 30-plus days, and we have kind of done our math, and approximately 80% of the residents in campgrounds in Henry County occupy those spots for 30 or more days. We've talked to Jessica Hill, along with, like Blake said, there's about five of those campgrounds in Henry County. And we've been in talks with several of those, and approximately 80% of those residents are 30 or more days, which according to state code, we cannot charge them occupancy tax, state and county code, because they're considered long-term residents. So right now, we're looking at that with the county board of supervisors and the county administrator to determine how to go forward with that. Currently, transient occupancy tax is up 17% this past year. Food and beverage tax has been up 4.8%. And entrepreneurship is up 46% in this county. And you can look around and see new small businesses opening, new small restaurants opening. The entrepreneurship being open, being up to 46% doubles the state average, creating a significant increase in our business license income. I feel like our office does a great job in this area already, but I know that we can make improvements, and I don't stand here and claim to be perfect. So I ask humbly, as I've worked in this office for almost 26 years, for your vote in November. I think our office does a great job, and of course, we can make changes and improvements. But until either one of us gets in there, we do not know with our budget and with what we're facing, what we can approve. But I do ask you for your support, and again, your prayers for me, my family, and every candidate that's up here, their husbands, their wives, and their family, because this is not easy. And I ask for your blessing and your vote, and like the other candidates have stated, just look at the candidates. If it's not me that you vote for, that's fine, but get out and vote because that is one of our God-given rights. Thank you.
I, I don't think it will come as much of a surprise that lawyers don't always know what the law is, and I sure don't know what the law is on this. But can you withhold a business license from someone who is delinquent?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I thought so. And I'm not inviting anybody to come back up, but I would compliment all of you on dodging that question. You did a great job. I thought I was good at that, but you all are better. We're, we're very fortunate to have a panel like this, really. I mean, we citizens are fortunate to have such good people willing to go through this process, which is difficult. And I thought they all, all eight who spoke tonight were impressive and prepared, and we, we really appreciate it. And this will conclude our program for this evening, and thank you all for coming out. Vote early and vote often.
My family and I have lived our entire lives right here in Henry County, and we spend our free time enjoying many activities in God's great And we spend our free time enjoying many activities in God's great outdoors. I'm a believer in hometown values, God, family, and country. For the last 23 years, I have worked at the Henry County Sheriff's Office and faithfully served the citizens of Henry County. As your sheriff, I vow to continue working hard every day to remove drug dealers and criminals from your streets to ensure this community is safe for you and your family. I will always be engaged with our local residents to understand your concerns and needs. And by working with members of this community, we will continue to keep Henry County a great place to live, work, and raise our families. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th. I'm Sheriff Wayne Davis, and this ad was paid for and authorized by D. Wayne Davis Jr. for Sheriff.
A broken or cracked windshield can ruin a day. At Daniel's Auto Glass, it's our goal to make that unfortunate scenario as painless as possible. We have been servicing Franklin County and the surrounding areas since 1995. Our customers are our neighbors, and we want you to know that you have the choice who repairs or replaces your windshield. And if you can't come out to us, we can come out to you. We also offer window tending, and we are fully equipped and certified to reset all camera systems in any windshield, both in shop and with our mobile unit.
Sarver Cleaning Services is locally owned and operated since 1997, providing leading commercial and residential cleaning solutions in Virginia and North Carolina. Let us handle all your cleaning needs. 24-hour service, seven days a week. Give them a call at (276) 647-7667, or info@sarvercleaningservices.com.
Nelson Towing and Recovery has been serving Martinsville, Henry County, and the surrounding areas for 45 years. We have a talented, friendly staff with almost 100 years of combined experience. All of our drivers are certified and experienced in just about any situation. Our fleet of tow trucks contains a variety of modern vehicles that will meet every possible need. We also provide roadside assistance to help you out in case you have a flat tire or run out of fuel. Nelson Towing and Recovery, 888-257-8866.
Richard Sarver Realtor, 2023, Reader's Choice Award winner for Best Realtor. For all your listings and selling needs, give him a call at (276) 732-3187.